Letters.
I didn't get one. I feel we're out.
I didn't get one either, Mike. So I think. Consider it good. All right. We'll call to order the September 20th study session presentation, which is a continuation of the study session that we were looking at last week. And with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Mike Skreg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to provide a little bit of background and maybe a little bit more clarity here. Understand that we, there's, there might be quite a bit of confusion. We had two topics last week, one being baseball. And as you well know, we're trying to come up with a target dollar amount of $4 million to try to, that's been our goal for quite some time. And so a challenge kind of from Solana Baseball Enterprises to match their funds and it fit into our long-range planning in terms of what we're trying to do in way of baseball improvements. We also then added the bathroom topic to that study session, got into that just a little bit, and had to stop short and reschedule it for today. So number one, I want to clarify, there's not necessarily a connection between these two, other than it is parks-related. There are bathrooms in Bill Burke and Berkeley Family Recreation Area. But the intention of the baseball conversation is prioritization of the $4 million of funds that have been identified by way of transient guest tax revenue and general fund balance revenue. So the bathroom conversation was somewhat at my prompting. You've heard me say multiple times now that we have back, have back-of-house items and front-of-house items, and our focus seems to be more on the front of the house than the back of the house. I'm not sure what you call the bathroom. It's not entirely back-of-house, but I guess my point is that our staffing issues and our planning and budgeting issues as relates to just ongoing maintenance of equipment, it seems to be a back-of-house item, something that we've set aside and we don't really dive into. And so, you know, I think that the beginning slide of this presentation refers to it as an evaluation, and at best, that's, that's my intent and staff's intent with this. Very frequently, we want to bring you a problem and a solution. Unfortunately, this is probably more problem than it is solution, just because of the scope of the reset. And one of the things that I would tell you, staff may be tired of hearing me say this, I kind of coined this phrase in my last community, but there's a lot of times when you need to raise revenue to expectation, or at least resources to expectation, your need to lower expectation to resources. And I think that parks in general, bathrooms in particular, are, we find ourselves in that scenario. I don't think that any of us, staff included, spend a lot of time doing the level of analysis that we're going to show you today, to give you a sense of, we, we know what we think about the bathrooms in general. We're getting feedback from concession stand operator and from CVB and tournament operators about quality concerns about the bathrooms, but I don't know that we've done this level of analysis in terms of what do we have in the way of facilities? What are we able to accomplish? What do we think success might look like? And at the end of the day, you're going to see some staffing levels that are pretty aggressive. I don't have an immediate solution for that. But we felt like we need to put together something as a reference point of if we want to get from where we are to where we want to be, what, what might that look like? So with that, I'll turn it over to Troy Reiner, who's, does building maintenance and has also spent a lot of time putting these numbers together.
And before, I don't want to interrupt Troy once he gets going, but something that I had asked for, and it looks like it was on the first slide there, is an overall diagram of what our current Parks and Recs staffing looks like and where they're assigned, and then what it would look like, the proposed model. And if there's any way we could get a printed copy of that, because I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I have, it's challenging for me to try to read all the small fonts and the flow charts at this distance. So if we could get printouts of those, that'd be great.
What's on the screen is not what you're asking for. This is just the, just the custodial stuff, so we'll have to put that together.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, listeners. Troy Reiner, Facility Superintendent. What we had put together and sort of where we left off last week on this particular slide shows a division organizational chart between what we currently have and what would be proposed in order to properly facilitate the demands of all of our downtown bathrooms, park bathrooms, and ball field bathrooms. It includes adding a full-time custodial manager for full-time custodial positions, and then for seasonal part-time custodians to handle the influx of the ball season for the additional bathroom cleanings. Any questions on that slide?
So that would be adding how many positions? Is it just the managerial person, or?
No, everything that's highlighted there in the, sort of the yellow.
Okay.
So it'd be adding four full-time positions, four seasonal part-time positions, and one full-time manager.
And then you might also touch on the assumptions about transferring employees as well, which if that's not workable, then that represents additional new positions to be accounted for.
Yeah, at some point, there's going to have to be an evaluation as to how much staff time's being spent now for that staff time to be transferred.
And I guess that's where I was getting confused in terms of what Commissioner Ryan just asked, you know, you know, the four full-time, new full-time positions and then the two part-times or seasonal. And those positions transfer from other positions within the department? I'm still trying to get my head around that.
I understand.
And I'm just wondering where we're going to pull them from.
Well, and I would encourage you to possibly set that part of the conversation aside.
Okay.
Frankly, I asked staff to do that out of expectation that your conversation probably was going to be, well, we're doing custodial, we're doing bathroom work already, can we capture that time and move it over? But acknowledging that we're challenged across the park staffing, and I think the broader point is, we're not talking about a position or two. We're talking about an entire, you know, division potentially, if we all agree on the bathroom expectations. If, if you say, that's overwhelming, financially or otherwise, then we need to turn the conversation around and say, what are we, what's our minimal expectations as relates to bathrooms? So this is intended more to be a staffing analysis. We've yet to come up with a budget and the rest of that detail. It's, it's the beginning of this conversation of what challenge are we facing as it relates to bathrooms?
Well, we're making a pretty significant investment in infrastructure. I'd like to see us take care of it this time around. So conversation goes.
And, and I do feel like there is a linkage there, though, in terms of, and I'll, I'll quit interrupting and let you get to your presentation here shortly, but in terms of, you know, where we're going to place staff within Parks and Rec, because bless your heart, Rick and Chris, you know, I've been pretty critical about the conditions in, in our parks, and it's no reflection on park staff, in my opinion, just looking at the acres that park staff are individually responsible for, we don't have enough park staff to meet our expectations. So, I mean, I think it's a connected conversation, because yes, I would expect us to have beautiful, pristine bathrooms. That's my, I mean, that would be a goal as, as a member of the governing body, that everybody that uses our facilities is like, wow, these are, you know, they're clean and they're neat and they're well-stocked, but at the same time, like, I want that for the parks as well. So just something that I'm going to be keeping in the back of my mind. Sorry, Troy?
Well, and speaking of moving on to investing in the facilities, the next slide.
I think that was the addition the mayor was asking about.
Okay. So yes, we have, yeah, go ahead. I'll turn this piece over to Jeff.
To be fair to Troy, this was added today based on the city manager's request. There's three slides, and I can make copies for you. I don't believe it was in your pocket since we got it in today, but we can make copies for you because it is small. This is the organizational chart of all of Parks and Recreation Department. That was provided by HR. Again, I'm sorry, I meant Jeff Hayman, Director, Deputy Parks Recreation Director. I forgot to introduce myself. And the next slide is a breakdown of parks for the Parks Division. The, I wanted to point out for the Recreation and Parks Division, the bottom line is part-time staff that we ideally want to try to get to. This summer, we did not get to ideal.
And I'm afraid that's a new trend, and I don't know that that's going to change.
How did we end up this summer as far as filling our part-time slots for?
I would venture to guess it was probably 70% of what we wanted to be as far as overall seasonal staff.
And that's just not finding the help.
Despite marketing effort, promotional efforts, advertising in the newspaper, advertising on social media, I think we did an ad in the paper, we did an ad on, I'm sorry, drawing a blank, but we did not, there just wasn't people coming in to apply. And that goes, that's just not exclusive to parks. That's scorekeepers, that's referees, that's lifeguards, that's, it was across the board, probably 70% of where we wanted to be.
Historically, we've had trouble ramping up at the beginning of the season is, you know, part-time workers aren't necessarily, they're getting out of school and not necessarily playing that far ahead, but my sense is, and it's not just the city's line, I hear, you're seeing it in retailers across the community, that, you know, they're not open, they're drive-through only, we're hearing about vendors that are dropping customers because of lack of drivers and, and workers, and that's been a trend that's been predicted demographically for quite some time, and it seems like it's here. So I think that's going to be an ongoing challenge for us. We've talked about.
K-dots problem as well?
Yes, yep.
Was that K-dots problem as well? The manager's report today touched on why some of the mowing's not getting done around the interchanges.
You know, the combination of lack of staff and then the lack of being able to get equipment maintained by the vendors because of lack of staff at the vendor level, it seems to be a pretty persistent issue.
And the last slide of these org charts is the Recreation Division, where all of our programming comes out of, the majority of our programming comes out of. As you can see, we have two vacant positions that we're currently pursuing, interviewing for right now, and the associated seasonal positions that are ideal for those programming supervisors and recreation leaders. And grounds maintenance, sorry.
Are those jobs just less desirable than what's in the marketplace? Or if we raised the pay, would we do any better at what we're trying to accomplish?
I think.
I'd ride a mower for you for cheap when I'm retired.
I think we've, Chris and I have had this conversation, I think also Mr. Schreger and I have had this conversation with Chris, was it's not a, it's not, pay is not the only component. It's the overall, trying to be a desirable employer for the community, and that includes, you know, more than just pay sometimes. You know, under, you know, training and, but doesn't mean it's solving the problem right now. But pay is certainly great, especially with young people, they do look at that, but it's not the total solution to the problem.
We're also competing with bigger metro areas that have similar positions.
Some of the recruiting efforts, some of the problems are the fact that we pay the same as some of the bigger communities with more quality of life. I guess amenities for, for, for the younger population, just the nightlife and other things that we have to compete against, that, that we have had those questions. I mean, we've, we've actually talked to people and they've told us that, well, I can do the same thing in Kansas City, I can do the same in Wichita or Tulsa or Oklahoma City for the same pay with more, more, I guess, quality of life outside of Parks and Recreation. That's just, that's just a fact.
Well, locally, I mean, you turn on the radio and we have major employers who are, advertising what they're paying, and it just seems like everyone's competing pretty hard right now.
I have no doubt that, that once we get the pay plan initiated and get, get the results back, we're going to have need for pay adjustments, just to be competitive in, in the local community. We've also had conversations that, you know, it being a lifeguard just isn't as glamorous as it used to be to that age group. And then, and that's probably the most glamorous parks, the part-time job we have, but, and then, you know, there's conversation too about just the social dynamics have gotten worse in terms of being an umpire or a scorekeeper. It's more adversarial than it used to be.
And not that we're going to have this conversation today, but I think that some of your, you know, observations, some of the feedback you're getting in terms of the city as an employer component, if there's some things that we could be doing better organizationally to appeal to, you know, the, the folks that we're trying to appeal to, absolutely, let's have, let's have that conversation at some point, because that's something that we can, might be able to fix quickly on our end, you know, as we wait for the, the pay scale study to come back.
Well, I am actively looking for success stories within Solana, and I would like, you know, so what are you doing, you know, to ensure your success? What culture, so I am looking for those actively, because I think it would go a long way. Unless there's any other questions regarding these three slides, I'm going to hand it back over to Troy and make you some copies.
So while Troy's coming to the podium, I think we're transitioning to a different part of this topic, but the, the point of everything that we presented so far is an inventory of the restroom facilities we have throughout our system, which frankly, I think, I doubt many people have a full realization of the extent of that. Some assumptions about the amount of time that it takes to, to clean them appropriately, and then we're just backing into the math of what that looks like from a staffing level. And I don't, I'm not aware that we've had those conversations before. I don't, I'm not aware that our, our staffing table or our staffing goals were built in that way.
Okay, so part of the task exercise was to compile a facility finish enhancement plan, essentially all of the bathrooms that we have within our organization, what we can do to improve the finishes, improve the feel of, of the end user while they're in the facility. Listed on this page are some of the things that were identified to make the bathrooms more efficient to clean, better for the end users, something that is a little more appealing for the, for the public to use, and easier for staff and more efficient for staff to clean. So run down through those real quick. Time entry locks. One of the struggles that we have is the vandalism, and so if we would devise a time entry lock system that would minimize the nighttime access to the facilities, that would help some aspect of the vandalism issues. Epoxy floor and some epoxy wall finish in the bathrooms, improved lighting.
For those of us less initiated, what's the value of the epoxy wall paint as opposed to?
The epoxy.
Whatever paint we're using.
The epoxy wall paint has better bond and is more durable, easier to clean, doesn't have a tendency to peel and chip and some of the other issues that we're having, some of the inside stuff. Enables us to go in and power wash. It's just a, it's just a more of a heavier, more durable finish for the interior of the walls.
Thank you.
Roof repair and trim repair. A lot of the facilities have got roof and trim issues that are going to need to be repaired, upgraded. Exterior painting, interior painting on some of the other surfaces. Exterior surveillance, that would be in areas that are allowed and facilities that would, that would also enable us to install some sort of exterior surveillance. So if there is specific activity on the outside, maybe we could see who's coming and going, who it was to rip the door closure off three weeks in a row, that kind of thing. Standardized plumbing fixtures. One of the things that was looked at was what can we do to make repairs and to make the fixtures and, and the different items within the bathrooms easier to repair? I would propose that the custodians and the custodian vans be outfitted with our standardized flush valves and sinks, sink valve stems, different things like that. So if a custodian shows up and there's a toilet that won't stop running or something like that, there'd be enhanced training done with the custodians so that they could change out a, a flush valve with 15, 20 minutes of training. You can teach somebody essentially how to shut the water off, pop out a flush valve, stick a new flush valve in, and that just saved us calling a plumber or having a special, a specific specialized staff, maintenance staff, do a simple call. And that would all be part of standardizing the fixtures. With the amount of toilets that we have, per se, in our system, you can't have 10 different toilets and have a van with all that stock, but if we standardize them, you can have a handful of parts on a vehicle and be able to cover a majority of the repairs that would have to be done.
Are you thinking like stainless fixtures or porcelain or?
Probably stay with porcelain. Porcelain flush valves is what majority of them have. So if we'd standardize the flush valves, as example, then we could carry a couple flush valves on the van and be able to, to change out majority of the flush valve fixtures if we ran into an issue. So just sort of taking a new look at if we have staff on site and there's an issue, rather than starting an entire work order chain and calling additional people out with the right fixtures in place and the right training in place, then having that person be able to address the issue at the time and then move on will be an ultimate savings.
So, and we had a conversation about stainless versus porcelain, and from a cost-benefit standpoint, I guess you concluded and convinced me that porcelain is workable?
Yeah, it's workable. I mean, it's, it's not probably as, as durable. They're, they also have sort of a new technology, the material's not a new technology, but the use of it is they're actually starting to make like a solid surface composite fixtures for sinks and toilets. They actually use them in prisons a lot, but they're not as fragile and breakable as porcelain, but it still gives you a porcelain, somewhat of a porcelain look. So it gets you away from the stainless steel look that is very prison-like. So.
Like Onyx, like a?
Yeah, it's sort of like an Onyx or a Wilson R. It's, it's that same solid surface material. It'll be just cast out of like a solid white or something like that.
But you determined not to use that for some reason or?
We're still exploring the cost.
Okay.
They're, they're relatively expensive. From, from the preliminary costs that I got, they're about four times the cost of a porcelain toilet. But more durable, more durable, harder to, to break and whatnot. We recently have had some vandalism where somebody walks in with a hammer and they can do quite a bit of damage pretty quickly. Those are, in that specific situation is, is sort of what had the incentive of, well, if we would have had a surveillance camera of some sort on the outside of the facility, then it would have been pretty easy to identify somebody walking in with a hammer. But with nothing, then we have nothing. So high-density partitions, the high-density polyethylene partitions. And, and then lastly, some high-volume air exchange exhaust, something to help the airflow. We have condensation issues quite a bit on the bathroom floors where we'll have cold overnight airs tempered the floor down, and then the warm daytime air. You walk in, the bathroom floors are wet, or wet and. wet, or wet in corners, wet in areas. So improved airflow would, would help with that.
And then going to, I know there's still some shake shingles and stuff on, going to all steel roofing?
Yeah.
Or for metal?
Yeah. Trying to match with the theme of our shelters.
Yeah.
Yeah. We show on this slide pictures of some of the problem areas and surface finish challenges that staff currently struggles with in cleaning and maintaining. A lot of our bathrooms have bare concrete tiled floors. The Bill Burke bathrooms even have like a Rhino lining sort of rubberized floor. And I don't think any of these surfaces are, are really designed for heavy public use. And the maintenance and cleaning of these surfaces are, are very challenging.
Grout perpetually won't get clean and less than the watertight surface contributes to odor and.
Yeah.
And uncleanliness.
Do all of our bathrooms have working floor drains?
Yes, I believe they do. Yeah. Can't say that for 100%, but I think majority of our bathrooms do.
But in terms of the proposed cleaning crews and stuff, being able to come in there and whether it's a power washer.
Right, power washer, kivak.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that would be the other benefit of the epoxy floor finish would be that we could go in and, and do a heavy, deep clean in relatively short amount of time and, and give an enhanced clean or a deeper clean, sort of in off hours. This last pictured slide portrays some of the examples of possible floor finishes. Speaks a little bit more about what I was talking about on floor, different finishes, standardized finishes. As you can see with the one with the urinals, the epoxy floor finish has got a base cove that's turned up. It would be essentially a similar type flooring that's applied like at the Fieldhouse bathrooms. It's a built up trial on epoxy floor. And then I would propose on some of the bathroom partitions that are actually laid up in block, that we would go ahead and trial them with the epoxy finish as well. It's easily, if it gets damaged, it can be easily repaired. Mix them up and resurface the wall surface. So, and that would give it a more durable cleaner surface than trying to paint concrete block. Any other questions? Slide? And then lastly, sort of a peripheral look was taken at the different bathroom units and some budgetary numbers were put together as far as what we're looking at for refurbished costs on all the different units and sort of a breakdown of what those different categories mean.
So if you look in the bottom right corner, that's a grand total of 1.15 million. And that's kind of our first pass at what we think it would take in terms of equipment or renovations. As I think Troy mentioned, part of the thinking is if we dedicated, if we brought onboard staff that were dedicated to the renovation and refurbishment of the bathrooms, we could start in a priority order and start working our way through the system with city staff. And these numbers reflect that versus.
Correct.
Contracting out the work. And frankly, some of, some of this conversation came from cost estimating contracted work and both the scope, kind of the, the work that was proposed as well as, as the cost. Cost seemed, it didn't seem out of line, but just kind of drove home the point of how expensive it is. And then it sparked the conversation about, are we just replicating what we already have in our system with these renovations? Should we be thinking about taking it to the next level? Having said that, this bathrooms in and of themselves didn't make it as a category on the park master plan necessarily. There's system-wide enhancements, system-wide improvements, plumbing, categories like that. But I honestly can't answer how it is that bathrooms kind of flew under the radar, but they certainly haven't in the ongoing conversation. And so kind of the criticisms and the frustrations are what drove, asked, drove me to ask staff to put this plan together. I guess my vision would be if, if this is a priority, we'd start working towards bringing, budgeting for staff and budgeting for annual expenditures to chip away at this.
And so, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You start.
I was just going to say, so none of this 1.15 gets us anywhere toward the, any of the identified shortcomings from the parks master plan. This is just.
Yeah, other than.
I mean, it's not, it might cross off a few, but it's not going to cross off a million dollars or.
Right. The, I mean, there's some broad categories in the park master plan at best about improvements and plumbing. There may be individual bathrooms called out in particular parks, but this, this did not make it as a category.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I know, and I wanted to wait till you're completed. I know you had made the comment that by doing the new floors, the epoxy finishes, that it would be more efficient to clean them, but yet we were adding considerably more staff. How does that go hand in hand, I guess, was my question. Because we're really only adding two, I mean, out of this, we'd only be adding two bathroom, or one bathroom out at Bill Burke. Is that correct? Is there two we're adding? Okay.
Well, from my high school math, I think the other possible answer is they're just not being cleaned at all now. But you don't have to say that.
I mean, I guess that's mine if, like.
I, I made the comment that we're not setting ourselves up for success in the current scenario. So we have, we have staff committed to it. We have some resources committed to it, but the level of deep clean that we're talking about and frequency that we're talking about is trying to meet an expectation that we don't meet. It's not a, it's not a criticism of staff. They're holding multiple directions. This is one, one thing they're supposed to do in a day. And these locations are spread across, not just the South, divisions, parks. It should be a, an intention of centralized approach. But what we haven't done is talk about, we live with less than daily cleaning.
I guess that was my other question. Obviously, from the comments made, we're not doing a daily cleaning of the, of the park restrooms. Under this scenario, we would be. Does that include winter also?
On the facilities that are not closed, yes.
And that's part of seasonal consideration. In speaking of, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's all I had, thank you.
Talking about unmet expectations, something that I've been made aware of is after hours issues. You know, say if you've got a tournament going on, on the weekend or in the evening, and there's a bathroom issue, sometimes it's difficult for the, the people on site, say, whether that's the concessionaire or an umpire or whatever, to know, who do you direct that, that concern to? Who, you know, is there any way that as we're looking at remodeling bathrooms and actually, I ran into a person at the cemetery on Friday afternoon who'd come out from Kansas City specifically to pay fees for her, her brother's opening of the, and closing of the burial site. And it was, it was, it was kind of difficult. Is there any way that we could incorporate something to make that a little bit more user-friendly, like some kind of an app or an emergency number where you can just, you know, text something in and be like, you know, Bill Burke, you know, south bathroom, you know, toilet overflowing or something like that where, that it makes it easier for people to let you know when there actually is a problem going on?
Sure. Currently, our, our neighborhood centers, the, all the public that uses that has an emergency contact on those facilities. So if there's an issue that comes up over the weekend with one of those facilities, there's an emergency contact.
Okay.
I would see this being handled the same way.
Sorry, my microphone wasn't on. I may look to Travis Shaley to speak to kind of how we approach tournaments and, and having staff roaming the site, but having staff on site.
Right, right.
Travis Shaley, Recreation Superintendent. Yes, we do have a staff member on site. Usually, they know who they are, but if they don't, they find them. And then, then the calls start, okay, from that staff member. Maybe they're not trained to, to fix the problem. If they are, they take care of it. Hey, we, we need some toilet paper or, you know, something.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But if we got a toilet overflowing or broke and everything, we're pretty much on call 24/7. And we handle those. Now, in a prompt manner, can we get somebody there? You know, yeah, we can streamline something, like you're referring to.
Yeah, because I just, you know, it's, it's a situation and I'd probably, I don't want to put Tiffany Benin on the spot, but it's probably, I mean, you know, when we, when you say it, it all makes sense and everything. And if you're the tournament organizer, I'm sure it does. But, you know, if you're the person that's in the bathroom and you're looking for someone to tell that there's no more toilet paper or that something's not functioning as it should, I just was wondering if there was something, you know, that we could at least include, you know, on a plaque on the wall, you know, you've got a problem, text to this number, call this number. I mean.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at our process and refine it. Sure.
Thanks. Are there questions?
Not about the specifics of the proposal, no.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, very shortly, we're going to be coming to you with an update on Jerry Ivy Pond and we'll continue to work through the park master plan. So I think, I think it would be helpful for, for me and other staff is to get a sense of how you, this priority, your receptivity to this approach relative to other park priorities.
My approach is very simple. When I would take our boys to soccer and baseball tournaments all around Central and Eastern Kansas, you know, I expected the fields to be in good shape, but my lasting memories of those parks are the bathrooms and the snack bars and the condition of the parking lot. I mean, that's what separates things, I think, when people stay in hotels. Things they remember, boy, that bathroom was crummy. It was small. It was, you know, so for me, the bathroom is front of house. I think parks are something that should be a priority for Salina. And if you've got a lot of folks outdoors for a long period of time, sooner or later, they're going to need a bathroom. And it's, it's, I think it's just a bad reflection on the city if our bathrooms look bad. And it's not a glamorous expense, which may be why it didn't rate high on, on the citizens poll. But it's just one of those necessary, necessary things.
I guess my.
Summing it up for me, I feel the same way. I forgot. It ought to be some, we don't need Ritz Carlton bathrooms, but they need to be nice enough and serviceable. And so we ought to commit, I do feel the public wants that. I don't know about daily cleaning in the outline parks. I think some of that could be rotated in a way that'd be satisfactory to, you know, most of those parks don't get, bathrooms don't get a lot of use during the week. But when you, we've got programming and seasonal things going on, then it's going to have to be a daily task. So.
And I could just add one more thing. We really have two costs. We have the cost to get to where we want to be, and then we have the cost of staying there once we get there. And I think probably our biggest cost is overcoming the lost opportunities for ongoing maintenance. And then it's just wear and tear. I mean, buildings are going to break down over 50, 60 years. So the thing, you know, that, one time we just have to eat the cost of getting us back to where we should be.
That's kind of the thought process that went into this is just brainstorming, not putting a number to it, but what, what's it going to take to get us from where we are to what we think the expect, the expectation is?
I know sometimes there's an economy of scale to, you know, do everything at once and, and looking at the price, you know, the price tag of 1.1 million to 1.2 million. Would it make sense to, to prioritize and try to do this over a two or three-year period where you would be able to take it out of the, the operating budget and not have to, you know, because I don't know if we have that in our operating budget right now, or is that something we're willing to debt finance or?
Well, actually, the thinking was to take it out of operating and Troy may be able to speak to it better than I can in terms of, if the assumption is we bring two dedicated staff on, then it's a question of pace. And there's going to be a learning curve, especially with the epoxy floor system. You can go for training for that. But yeah, taking the bathrooms in priority order and there isn't an expectation that we would get all these knocked out in, in one budget year for sure. We're probably two, three years or more.
Two to three years, I think we could probably handle out of the budget. I mean, it's, if we were trying to do it all in one year, I think it could put a little bit of a strain on us.
But, you know, I, I think for the social and recreational and academic affluence of this community, that park budget is probably too small. I mean, we've been trying to squeeze blood out of this, this turn for years. And you end up with the same result. Something doesn't get taken care of. And then when we do have to fix it three years later, it's three times as expensive. You know, so if this is a priority, then we need to budget it like it's a priority.
Including staffing up for that, including, you know, people who are going to check in on these bathrooms and make sure they're deep cleaned, et cetera, et cetera. Because the better we take care of the bathrooms, I mean, my philosophy has always been the nicer something is and, and people coming in can see the value that we put on it, the less likely it is to get vandalized. And maybe that's Pollyanna-ish thinking, but I know that when I'm in an area that's beautifully landscaped or very clean, I mean, my inclination is that I, you know, I want it to stay that way. So, I mean, I think that if we're going to commit to this, we need to find a way to commit to the additional staff positions. But then, going back to where I started, I also don't want to have beautiful bathrooms in the middle of parks that are completely barren or overrun with weeds. So I think maybe as Commissioner Davis was saying, it's a bigger conversation about is our parks budget big enough for our expectations? And I don't know when you're, if, when or if you're planning on going there, but I think it's, I think it's a reasonable conversation to have at some point.
We do have.
We have a gap.
We do have the parks portion of the sales tax, which I think helps us fund some of this work. And then the ongoing staffing levels are, and, you know, other maintenance issues are the bigger challenge. But understood. I know at the beginning of the study session, there was some, some side conversation before we got started about the CXT bathrooms and how those work. And we never really got a chance to discuss that in great detail, but if there's any questions in that regard, we have the staff here to answer them. It's essentially a prefabricated box that gets brought in, pre-manufactured, brought in, set on a pad, very similar construction with what we're talking about in terms of durability and, and fixtures. And it is expensive, but from a construction material standpoint, it's state bid, competitive bid pricing there, probably the best opportunity to have the most durable unit versus a stick-built bathroom.
Those would still need epoxy trowel on. Those are, those just come concrete.
Yeah, correct. Do they come? Do they come with their own fixtures, or would we be adding fixtures? You know, you talked about having a, you know, being consistent throughout the system.
Standardized? Yeah, we'd probably have to get with the manufacturer and specify what we wanted for flush valves and plumbing fixtures, make sure they were equipped to match what we were putting in our system.
Any other questions or comments?
They do have floor drains and hose them, yeah, power wash them.
So this conversation's headed in the right direction, I guess. We, I'm not prepared to say that we're going to pull the trigger in the next few days or weeks, but what I've heard from you is confirmation that yes, this is a direction that you want us to plan to, and we'll get started.
All right.
For me, definitely.
Okay. Thank you very much, Troy. All right, anything else? And I guess we will be adjourned until four o'clock. Oh, unless there are any members of the public here, I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public that have questions or who would like to comment on the discussion that we've been having vis-à-vis the bathrooms and the custodial staffing? All right, then now we'll be back at four o'clock. Thank you. All right. Thank you, and welcome to the Monday, September 20th, 2021 meeting of the Salina City Commission. Before we call the meeting to order, I'd like to request confirmation from staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we'll proceed to roll call, please.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Before we get to the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, I would like to ask you today to keep in mind the 145 Salinans who've lost their lives due to COVID, the 20 patients that we currently have in Salina Regional, and their friends and families who've suffered these losses, and the healthcare workers that struggle to keep up and take care of all the COVID patients that they have in the hospital at this time. Would those who are able, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll proceed to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of the week of September 17, 2021 to September 23, 2021 as Constitution Week in the City of Salina. Melissa Stouchlich will read the proclamation.
How close did we get on your, on your last name? Because I was glad that the city clerk took a swing before, before I did.
Much better than it usually is.
Okay, is it Stouchlich?
At least I knew where it was.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. September 17, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Melissa R. Hodges, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Salina in the State of Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigorously protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties and remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas to be affixed on this 20th day of September, the year of our Lord, 2021.
Thank you very much.
Sorry about that, I ran all the way from the party. I still haven't caught my breath.
You did a great job. Are there any, any plans, any events that are going to be happening this week to celebrate Constitution Week?
Friday was the actual Constitution Day, and so we did have bells ringing around the state. We also sent out a Facebook and Twitter and several other social media things to have you set your clock on your phone to actually chime as well. So you may have been in the Walmart or someplace else and heard everybody getting a phone call at the same time, and that was to remind us of this amazing document. The Daughters of American Revolution were very instrumental in getting this actually into a law. Eisenhower was the one present at the time, and we were the ones that pushed it. I also brought booklets for you because I know in this time, day and age, this gets brought up a lot.
Thank you.
So we would like you to have your own personal booklet of the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you.
And hopefully it will answer some questions.
Thanks.
And before you return to the podium, I can give you, while you're up here, I can give you your signed copy of the proclamation. All right, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item 3.2, recognition of Rod Franz for his contributions to the City of Salina. Mayor Hodges will read the proclamation.
Well, needless to say, we are delighted to have Commissioner Rod Franz with us here today, and it brings me a lot of joy to be able to read this proclamation. And then I'll invite Mr. Franz up to the podium for any remarks he'd like to give. And then we will present him with all of his swag that he gets to take home. And I should have been, I should have been on my game and brought you a sack because evidently you're pretty highly on my game and brought you a sack, because evidently you're pretty highly thought of, and we have a lot of things for you to take home today. So, at any rate, here's the proclamation. Honoring Commissioner Rod Franz. Whereas, we are here today to express our appreciation to Rod Franz and to honor him not only for his distinguished 20-year career with the City of Salina, but also for his dedicated service to the residents of Salina as a city commissioner. And whereas, Rod began his career with the City of Salina on January 8, 1996, as Finance Director, leading the department through many challenges and changes, always looking for ways to improve processes, enhance the city's fiscal management, and expand citizen services until his retirement on June 10, 2016. And whereas, Rod continued his service to the citizens of Salina by serving on the City Commission from January 13, 2020, until health issues compelled his resignation on April 5, 2021. And whereas, during his tenure as City Commissioner, Rod's fiscal responsibility, careful analysis, and work ethic served as an exceptional example for city employees and commissioners alike. And whereas, the governing body of Salina, Kansas, does hereby express our sincere appreciation to Rod for his service to the City of Salina, and wishes him continued success as he perseveres in his recovery, recognizing the dedication of his family, friends, and medical staff who have made his recovery possible. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the City of Salina, on behalf of the governing body, express our appreciation and recognize Rod Franz for his contributions to the City of Salina, wishing him good health and happiness in the years ahead. And I'd like to ask for a round of applause for Rod to see if he's ready. And as many of you have known, Rod has battled back really hard from the after effects of a traumatic brain injury, and I'm so proud of him today and proud of his courage for being willing to offer us a few words today, as he works really hard through speech therapy to regain all the skills that he lost in that injury. So I'd like to invite Mr. Franz to the podium for any remarks that he might want to give.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you, that way. I am getting better. I worried 40 years of government, 20 years was here. I would it all again. Saline has been good to me. I raised two sons here, two heirs, eggers. I ran for City Commission and won. Being on the Commission was good for me. I learned a lot. I failed a lot of light methods this year. I came running a month ago. Thank you for your cards and colleagues. Thank you to my sons, Brian and his risk Katie, and Chris Franz, and my partner, Gail. One of the things that I'm trying to talk to you about is to reference what it meant when I got thongs on the hot legs in the hospital, or one came to me, or they're littleized through Gail. They'd come to me, and focusing on those things helped me work through this sense of how I can, once again, say things, say words that make sense, at least most of the time now. So I want to say, family and friends, city compilions, the city rentager, and the city commizen, all want to help my city. I will do again whatever I can, and I thank you for your support today.
Thank you very much. Far away, we've got the proclamation. We have your plaque. It doesn't become official until you get the plaque for serving. And here's the best thing of all. You've got the key to the city, so now you can go anywhere you want to be. It will unlock anything for you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rod. It's a pleasure having you.
Can I?
Absolutely, please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. And thank you, sir, please. As Rod heads back, I had a couple of words that I'd thought about. I said, I really miss Rod sitting up here. Nothing against you, Mr. Peck, but I know I leaned heavily on Mr. Franz for his financial background when we dealt with things. And over the time, I don't, just considering him a commissioner, I think we all consider him our friends. Not to say that Rod's a numbers nerd, but I went over to visit him the other day, and I took him the 2020 audit. And Gail texted me not too long and said he's going through it. Rod and I have made a pact that we'll continue to meet and discuss city business, as I do totally respect his love for the community, and thanks for all you've done, Rod.
Thanks again.
And I would just, when I first came here, when people moved to a city, the adults usually make friends through their kids. And when my son went on his first camping trip, I had to go and pretend like I knew what I was doing. And I want you to know, I would have died out there if Mr. Franz hadn't kept me alive, made sure I had food to eat, and a tent to sleep in. And I didn't even know what you did for a living. I had no idea you were the City Finance Director, but this guy can make a mean dinner if you're out in the woods.
A man of many talents.
Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you very much.
And I would just say that I've never served on any board or commission anywhere where anybody worked as hard and was insightful and dug into issues as much as Rod did, and we really appreciate, all of us up here appreciated that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's great to see you. It's great to have you back. Don't be a stranger. You've got to call us out when we're messing up, okay? Thank you. All right. This will bring us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak about an item that does not appear on today's agenda. I would ask that you identify yourself by your first and last name. Let us know where you're from, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. And with that being said, I would open it up to anyone who would like to speak today.
Deborah Corales, since, oh, Salina, since 2018, over 61 breed bans have been repealed, 16 of them in Kansas. That's almost a third of all repeals. A total of 13 plaintiffs who used to or currently live in Williston are suing the city in federal court claiming the ban is unconstitutional. Their attorneys laid out how each was affected by the ordinance. This hits home. My dog was taken. With some giving up their dogs, others moving away from the area, and in one case, a family deciding their 12-year-old dog could not handle being relocated and having to euthanize. The pit ban has therefore deprived plaintiffs of the comfort, companionship, and sense of security that their dogs provide them. The subject plaintiffs, "To be reasonably concerned of their property may be destroyed or euthanized under the pit bull ban," one of the part of the suit reads. What's worse, in multiple cases, the suit claims the dogs weren't actually pit bulls and shouldn't have been banned in the first place. The reason that could happen is one of the most infuriating parts of the ban, and in the law in general. The enforcement of the law depends on the city's police and animal control officers identifying whether an animal is a pit bull or not based on their experience and expertise. The problem comes straight from the ordinance itself with the final paragraph summing up dogs that are banned. Any dog which has the appearance or characteristics of being predominantly of the breeds of bull terrier, and then the three we have listed, in our pit bull ban. The idea that anyone can tell the breed of an unfamiliar dog by sight or a list of characteristics is based on outdated science. The arbitrary enforcement and overly broad language in the ordinance are both reason enough for the City Commission to act, but there is one much, much more important reason. Breed bans do nothing to make the public safer. That's the heart of the issue. Breed-specific laws are based on junk science and demonize responsible pet owners. Organizations from the American Veterinary and Medical Association, the American Bar Association, and the National Animal Care and Control Association agree. In the lawsuit, the plaintiff's attorney quote from a statement made by the Humane Society of the United States, "There is no evidence that breed-specific laws reduce bites or attacks on people, and they divert resources that more effective animal control and public safety initiatives. Breed-based policies aren't founded on science or credible data, but on myths and misinformation surrounding different breeds. Dog bites are a serious problem, but banning a particular breed of dog does not help address the problem. Williston's ban is an unjust, ineffective law based on bad science. That shouldn't require a federal lawsuit to be changed, and it doesn't have to. The Williston City Commission can repeal the ordinance whenever it chooses. That should be a priority here also. Overland Parks will be repealed today."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak today?
Norman Manal, Salina, Kansas. Went to the fair this last week, and I talked to the High Plains Journal editor. Is economic development our best interest for the future? We're running out of water. They are doing studies. These results will be published in the High Plains Journal in the future. We're awful short-sighted in this area. When you turn on your faucet and you ain't got no water, then you'll say, well, why didn't I do something sooner? You better do something now before it's too late, because we're using all this water up in western Kansas. The whole western United States is running out of water. They're shutting off water to cattlemen, to cities. In the city of Las Vegas, you cannot plant a tree or a piece of grass. You have to plant rocks. It's coming here. When that fire comes over the Rocky Mountains, you people wish you to take an action. Why are we waiting? We elect you to solve problems.
Thank you, Mr. Manal. Is there anyone else here today who would like to speak? And I don't know that I see anyone online with their hand raised, so with that, we will go on to, we don't have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that will take us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of September 13, 2021. Item 6.2, authorize the purchase and installation of four HVAC units for the Great Plains Manufacturing Convention Hall at the Tony's Pizza Event Center, and the installation of the necessary HVAC controls to make operation of the system efficient and manageable. Item 6.3, consider acceptance of a utility and drainage easement for the northbound Ninth Street Bridge. And item 6.4, consider acceptance of a permanent trail easement for the Markley Road Trail Project.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? And if not, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
May I move we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 21-11077, prohibiting public camping.
Somehow, I have misplaced my item 7.1. Thank you so much. This is the ordinance prohibiting public camping. Ordinance number 21-11077 was passed on first reading on September 13, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Hello, my name is Karen Shade. I just finished speaking some with Chief Nelson. I believe that letting people do whatever they want, wherever they want, just doesn't work. My brother was a park ranger. You can't have that. Private property gets damaged, and public safety can be threatened. But from what I read in the journal on this topic, I wondered if the city was shifting, I don't know, focus to, and whether this ordinance will either make people just go to the county to camp, and the county has a way of fixing that as well. And I don't know if it will create more problems for private shelters. On multiple occasions, I've heard some of the present-day campers on the bus say, I'm drunk, and I want to get drunker. And I think it's tough to mix those individuals with people in a shelter. People in a shelter may have to pass a drug test. That was true with the Ashby House, and maybe a 25 to a third did not succeed in passing a drug test on the first time. And they would come back the next day to take another test. And sometimes I saw them there four days in a row. Some of these women left, and I know of two who hooked up with what I would call a sugar daddy to provide shelter. I know of three or four others who maybe found a couch to sleep on, but soon learned that day two or day three, they would be expected to have sex. One of the strange things that takes a lot of time on intake at the Ashby House is answering the hug questions about whether women have been sexually trafficked, or prostituted, or those kind of things. So I kind of wonder how this ordinance, by picking up people who are camping, and admittedly, not too many will be women, but having them go to the Ashby House, fail a drug test, then what? There are other things that go on in the intake procedure. I wonder what would happen if three or four women were dropped by the shelter to be provided shelter for the night at one time, when it does take 60 or 90 minutes to do intake. Everyone there, people get frustrated that IDs are photocopied, medications have to be turned in, belongings are searched, all clothing goes into a dryer, and that's to prevent bedbugs. There's about 16 to 20 rules, and everybody has to get along. And when you think about, the Ashby House is there primarily to serve families, and you're bringing in transient people who might be only there for a night or two, it's got some interesting dynamics. In talking with Chief Nelson, he confirmed that there was no representative at the Ashby House with his group meeting, and I don't know if what I'm speaking about is a concern for them or not. Last Saturday, I saw a couple come in. They were at the North Travel Plaza, where Popeyes and Starbucks is. He approached the bus, saying they were traveling from South Dakota to Concordia. They had gotten off the bus. They knew- They knew they could connect from Salina to Concordia. He asked if there was a homeless shelter. We said yes. The homeless shelter, he asked for women. We said yes. His wife wanted to go as a couple. Well, we didn't know if that was possible. I don't think the Ashby House, if rooms are full, I don't think they'd put a couple in a room with two other single women. I just don't think they'd do that. And it was 3:30 in the afternoon, and I was telling him, you know, you might want to start making some decisions because your ability to get a ride is going to evaporate at 4:10 when the buses next come around. And so some of this, I can't imagine not traveling with money, not traveling without knowing I had money to spend two nights in a motel or whatever, but people do that. And so I don't know if that's been taken into consideration with all of this. I appreciate the lenience with the time. It's just, I totally understand what Chief Nelson is looking to do, and I'd agree with it. I would just say, let's be aware that there might be some unintended consequences with this moving forward.
Thank you very much. And I think that, I think that that's something, I hate to speak for the governing body, but part of our conversation last week was, you know, some of the unintended consequences. And it's my hope that this dialogue will continue, and it will, will continue to evolve our procedures and how exactly this works. Did you need to speak to something, Chief Nelson?
Sure.
We did have a nice conversation before the meeting started, and she's right, we don't have anything to do with the intake part. That wasn't addressed. That's not really us. But what I would say as far as the Ashby House, she's right, they weren't part of the stakeholders meeting on August 12th, but on August 4th, myself and Deputy Chief Morton actually went to the Ashby House on South A Street and talked to the executive director, Andy Houtberg, if that's how you pronounce his name. And we had a discussion about this, and not to speak for him, but he had no concerns with it as far as that process. He didn't have any issue with the ordinance itself. But I did, in fact, speak with him personally on, like I said, August 4th, but he was not, correctly, he was not at the 812 stakeholders meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Just to clarify, this may be a point of confusion, but just to be sure, nothing that we're doing by way of ordinance or by implementation by the police department requires any of the agencies to change their policies, change who they might provide service to, what their, what their, you know, requirements are to receive their services. We're just trying to identify, are there service providers that could assist these individuals as we interface with them?
Correct. We're absolutely providing an opportunity to go to their respective shelters in the city if they so desire. To the point, since our last meeting, we've also conferred with one of the local taxi cab services that's 24/7, we will be providing them a ride to the shelter of their choice if they so desire at our cost, taxpayers' cost. That was arranged since our last meeting.
Thank you very much, Chief Nelson. Any other comments or questions?
Hi, Bill Longbine, Salina. Just spent the weekend in downtown Denver and witnessed a lot of what we have discussed about the encampments and stuff. And we don't want Salina to be downtown Denver. I think it's a good ordinance, and it should go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Longbine. Anyone else? Not, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Commissioners, I just want to make sure you're aware, there's a version with typos corrected at your seat, so that's been addressed.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11077.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11077 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 21-11028, changing the zoning district classification from A1 to R1 on a 9.82 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive between the Grand Prairie Edition and the Briargate Edition south of the Salina Municipal Golf Course.
Thank you. And this is kind of an unusual one. Normally, we have our second readings back-to-back, but ordinance number 20-11028 was actually passed on first reading on February 24, 2020, with the second reading being held in abeyance until the property was platted. Since that time, the property has been sold by Bob Hayworth to Cedar Point Development LLC, Kevin and Stephanie Cool, who have completed the final plating of the property. Is there anything that staff needs to add to that since there's such a long lag time between the first and the second reading?
It was just pointed out to me, there's a typographical error in the blue sheet. It's actually Cedar Ridge Development LLC is Kevin and Stephanie Cool, not Cedar Point.
Cedar Ridge, okay.
Yes. They purchased both Cedar Ridge and proposed Cedar Point, but we keep, staff keeps getting those confused.
Okay, thank you. Is that something that will need to be corrected in the ordinance? Or does it, if you're currently in the ordinance?
It's just in the staff report, but I was, yes, it looks like the references in the ordinance are correct.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for staff from the commission? Any questions or comments from members of the public? If not, and I don't see anyone online, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve on second reading, ordinance number 20-11028.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 20-11028 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Item 8.1.
Item 8.1, consider the acceptance of the offered right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications from Cedar Ridge Development LLC to serve the proposed Cedar Point Edition, a 22-lot subdivision of a 9.82 acre tract of land located on the north side of Cedar Ridge Drive between the Grand Prairie Edition and the Briargate Edition.
Thank you. Staff to address this, oh, Mr. Andrew, there you are.
Hidden behind the pool. As you can see, this, there are terms that go back and forth between Cedar Ridge Drive and Cedar Point as the addition, but the proposed addition name that is before you this afternoon is the proposed Cedar Point Edition. And Kevin and Stephanie Cool formed Cedar Ridge Development LLC to acquire property from Mr. Bob Hayworth and to finish out his development. Mr. Hayworth has decided he wants to retire from the development scene, so he has transferred ownership. At the time, staff accepted the application. They had a contract to purchase. They have now completed that purchase, and they are trying to finish out the final plating for Cedar Point. They are also proposing to finish out and build on the undeveloped lots in Cedar Ridge Edition, which is across the street to the south. So there was, part of the reason for the delay between the first reading and second reading and where we are this afternoon is because when Mr. Hayworth purchased the property from the Graves Trust, the Graves Trust did not include a portion of what is to be dedicated Cedar Ridge Drive. So Mr. Hayworth was in a position to dedicate that as right-of-way, and it took some time and effort to get all the trustees lined up and get the property transferred to Mr. Hayworth. But that has occurred, and so this missing slice of right-of-way is now included in the, in the plat. This subdivision is also odd from the standpoint that the east, or the western portion of this property was assessed for the construction of Cedar Ridge Drive. The eastern portion was not because there's a stretch of road along the east edge of the subdivision that has not been improved with paving and curb and gutter. And so the applicants in this case would be responsible for completing that uncompleted section. They may be able to do that through creating a benefit district, but whether that occurs or not, they are the ultimate responsible for making sure that happens. This plat layout has 22 building lots. There's two street connections. There's nine home sites on Cedar Point Court and 13 home sites on Cedar Point Place. This property has 1,100 feet of frontage on Cedar Ridge Drive and the entire north boundary butts hole number five on the municipal golf course. The, there are six lots in the subdivision that back up to Cedar Ridge Drive, but there'd be no individual driveways permitted on Cedar Ridge Drive, and that is the reason for the acceptance of restricted access. The two street names are going to be Cedar Point Place and Cedar Point Court. The circle name was replaced with Cedar Point Court. This area is part of the original Mariposa Master Plan area, and that master plan area includes what is today Mariposa Edition, Grand Prairie, Florida Soul, and Briargate. If you look back in time, at one point, all of this property along what is today Cedar Ridge Drive was all owned by the Graves Trust, and the initial thought is that they were going to develop the entire property as Mariposa, but as they sold off parts of it, then we had individual developers developing individual pieces. But the overall plan for this subdivision is consistent with the original master drainage plan for the area, and that is, this is at the high point, so everything on this property drains down across Grand Prairie, across the golf course, and into the Mariposa Pond that's at the low end of the basin. As I noted, the eastern portion, or eastern frontage of this subdivision, Cedar Ridge Drive has not been improved to city street standards, and that would need to be done as, as part of this development. The other fact, factor, they are going to have their own stormwater detention pond in the northwest corner, and the city has had a policy of essentially giving developers the choice whether they want to establish a homeowners association or they want to make a lump sum payment to the city to take over the pond with public maintenance. In this case, the developers have elected to pay the fee and do not wish to create a homeowners association to take care of the pond. The applicants have indicated a desire to use special assessment financing to finance their street's water and sewer. They've not yet submitted a special assessment financing application. There's no property owners who would be impacted by those assessments except for possible assessments on the two lots across the street in Valley View relating to the upgrading of the remaining portion of Cedar Ridge Drive to city street standards. Those lots were not included in the original Cedar Ridge Drive Benefit District. And so the applicant would like to form one benefit district for internal improvements and a separate benefit district to complete Cedar Ridge Drive. All of those requests for special assessment financing would come to you a later time for you to make that determination, but that is, that is what their, their plan is. And so this went before the planning commission on August 17th. They voted to approve the final plat, finding that it conformed with the approved preliminary plat, and they approved it subject to a number of conditions, and one of those is that no, no development can occur in any development phase until and unless Cedar Ridge Drive is upgraded to city street standards. And so that needs to occur as part of the development of the subdivision. If you concur with the planning commission's action, a motion should be made to accept the right-of-way dedications for Cedar Ridge Drive, Cedar Point Court, and Cedar Point Place, except the offered easement dedications and the restricted access on Cedar Ridge Drive. And then that motion, that would authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city. In the alternative, you could decline to accept the offered dedications and return this plat to the commission stating your reasons for not wishing to accept the dedications. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about Cedar Point, and I do believe we have Stephanie Cool and also the design engineers for the project from Cal Valley Engineering.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Nope.
No questions? I guess my only question is, what's the, the stormwater detention pond fee? You had mentioned that it's a one-time fee and...
What has generally has occurred in the past is that the, the pond is final designed and built, and then public work staff goes out and does measurements and gives an estimate of the 10-year maintenance fee that is presented to the developers, and then they would get that, there would be an agreement to dedicate that for a set fee. They would write a check to the city, and then there would be a deed of dedication. But that generally occurs after the pond is built so that public work staff can actually inspect it and get a better idea of what the maintenance obligation would be.
So, and, and after the 10-year period, then, any repairs, well, even before the 10-year period, any repairs that it needs, does become the responsibility of the city, correct?
Correct. So during that, the city can hopefully call on the money that's been set aside for that, but it, it is possible that it reaches a point 25 years down the road when a repair needs to be made, and it's going to be done by city crews.
And that cost estimate is based on maintenance more so than repair or replacement? So ongoing mowing and upkeep?
Okay, so it's not like if it needs a, you know, I don't, I don't even know, a relining or a rebuild or anything like that? It's not, it doesn't anticipate that. It's more just for the day-to-day, making sure it looks...
Most of these are designed with a four-to-one slope and a dry bottom, so the primary maintenance is mowing, but there, there can be cases where there might be erosion or someplace where riprap or something might need to be replaced, but the primary maintenance on a day-to-day or annual basis is mowing.
Gotcha. And that becomes the responsibility of Parks and Rec.
Yeah, not necessarily Parks and Rec, but of the city, yes.
Of the city, yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And the, the holding pond, the idea behind that is it holds runoff from the subdivision and then has an outlet that allows it to go downstream.
The idea is it's a field today, and there's a certain amount of water that already comes off. The idea is to detain it and have it come off at the same rate as it does today in its undeveloped state, and so it's going to end up first in the Grand Prairie ponds and then be released from there across the golf course and eventually ending up at the Mariposa.
It's been a while since we discussed it, but I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew. I think that takes care of us here. I'd invite the applicant to come up if there's anything that you'd like to share with us, and if not, don't feel under any obligation to do so, but I just wanted you to have an opportunity to speak if you chose.
Hello. Stephanie Cool, Salina, representing Cedar Ridge Development. I just want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here today. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have concerning the development from just a generalized statement and any technical questions as far as the detention pond or things like that. We will defer to our experts here from Cal Valley. So any general questions for us?
Any questions for Ms. Cool?
Thank you very much. That's easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Not, then we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we accept the offered right-of-way easement and restricted access dedications and to authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept application number P19-4A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Item 8.2.
Item 8.2, consider acceptance of the offered public utility easement dedication on the Elliott Electric property at 700 York Street.
Looks like the Dean Andrews show, huh?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, this involves the offer of a public utility easement dedication from Elliott Electric. They purchased some property from Tim Pestinger over at York and North Street. They purchased some property from Tim Pestinger over at York and North Street. And they just completed a major addition to house an electrical supply business. And when planning staff and Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities, were reviewing that, we determined there was a north-south sanitary sewer line that crossed the property, but there was no easement. And our research showed that this was a public line that served property farther to the north. And it should have been included in an easement when the property, the Northeast Industrial Park, was replatted. But that did not occur. And so Elliott Electric is proposing to rectify that by dedicating an easement, which will denote that this is a public utility line that serves multiple properties. So Elliott Electric has executed an easement. They have hired a Kansas licensed surveyor to prepare exhibits and it's ready for execution and acceptance.
Thank you. And that's a pretty impressive building that's, that's gone up for Elliott Electric. I don't know if anybody else has driven past, but it's a...
Their, their addition was larger than the original, so it's quite an investment.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any questions or comments from the public? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we accept the offered public utility easement and authorize you to sign that easement on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the offered public utility easement dedication on the Elliott Electric property at seven hundred York Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes five zero. Item eight point three.
Item eight point three, F and W Tractor Company, Inc., DBA Agri Center. Eight point three A, ordinance number two one dash one one zero seven nine, consider an amendment to the South Ninth Street Corridor Plan portion of the Salina Comprehensive Plan and the boundaries of the service commercial portion of the CO District. Eight point three B, ordinance number two one dash one one zero eight zero, consider an application filed by F and W Tractor Company, Inc., DBA Agri Center, requesting the annexation of a twenty-four acre tract of land located on the west side of South Ninth Street, south of Waterwell Road.
Well, the, the good news I can report is I've just shortened your meeting. The, the bad news is that Agri Center, the owner, F and W Tractor Company, had informed staff on Friday afternoon that they are withdrawing all their applications related to this project and are, don't wish to be annexed or zoned or go forward with the project at this time. So there is no need to take up either of these items. Is that the, the owner has expressed a desire to maintain their agricultural zoning and maintain being outside the city limits. So these two items have been formally withdrawn by F and W Tractor Company. The idea was to construct a Kubota dealership that was across the street from the Kubota plant. But either the, some timing wasn't right. But I confirmed with them again this morning that they understand that if they're completely withdrawn and they come back, they'll start from scratch, so.
Add it to my diary, the Dean Andrews shortened a meeting.
Actually, seriously.
Usually I link them up.
Give me five minutes. We're going to have a proclamation about this, all right?
But I'm sorry to report that they've withdrawn their plans at this time.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry that they're withdrawing their plans as well. Do we need to do, take any action in terms of accepting a withdrawal of item eight point three or anything? Or are we just good to go?
I think you're good to go.
Okay, great. That brings us to other business. Are there any other items that commissioners would like to bring up to discuss? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.